We call to order the special meeting of September 25th, 2012 of the Grant County Commission. Welcome, everybody. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands: One nation, united in all. I salute the flag of the state of Nashville and the citizens of our perfect citizens among the United States.
I can get a motion to approve the special meeting agenda?
Chairman Cast, I need to approve the special meeting agenda for September 25th, 2012.
Next second? There's a motion of proper second to approve the special meeting agenda. Is there any discussion on motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye. Aye. Motion passes. At this time, we're going to recess as the Grant County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Grant County Canvassing Board. Can I get a motion to recess?
So move.
Second. All those in favor, signify saying aye. Aye. Motion passes. Call to order the Grant County Canvassing Board. First item on the agenda is approve or disapprove the September 18th, 2012 special election results. Has everybody got to see these?
No, I'm not.
Mr. Scriscie?
Chairman Commissioners, I did give you a little write-up of the summary of the election that we did to do for the local option grocery receipts tax. I think the biggest thing we had was the number of undeliverables to residents of Grant County. We are looking into it as why we had so many. There were some individuals that the addresses were correct, everything was good, leaving the company that did the election for us, but somehow some residents didn't receive their ballots.
So 4,312 ballots were returned to our office by September 18th.
Oh, okay.
And the number that voted in favor of the local option tax was 3,605 with 554 voting against the local option tax question. We had a total of 153 ballots that were rejected by the mail-out election board. Some of those ballots that were rejected weren't filled in correctly. So the reader that we have here during the day, the machine that reads the ballots, reject those and then they're given to the board to see why they were rejected. Those were determined if they weren't filled out correctly, they weren't accepted as a true ballot. For the special election, we did have 21% voter turnout, which is pretty decent considering all those undeliverables that were sent back to us. The undeliverables isn't unique to our office. I think anytime the treasurer, the assessors send out things from their office, they get quite a bit of mail back. Don't know if it's on the resident of Grant County or if it's the mail service, but either way, it happens a lot anytime we have a large mail out.
And that typically happens as well with the solid waste that we send that gets a large amount. The treasurer's been actually trying different options. He prescribed to like an address lookup system one year for him to try and see if we could fix that problem. It's just a very time-consuming and cumbersome issue that you can't just, it's not easy to fix. And as soon as you get, it seems like 10 of them done, 10 people will move and now there's no longer valid addresses for those people. So it's kind of always this moving target trying to get our addresses correct in the system because the residents aren't giving them to us.
Well, I think he did a good job by letting people know that if they didn't get a ballot, they need to contact his office. And there were some addresses that were correct in the system. They were correct on the ballot, but for whatever reason, the mail just said it was undeliverable.
Can you please have a seat, Mr. Baldwin? Can you hear that? So you can hear me, but you can't hear anybody else. Okay. Well, at this time, I accept a motion to approve or disapprove the September 18th special election results.
September 2nd.
There's a motion to approve the September 18th, 2012 special election results. Is there any discussion on that motion? Mr. Baldwin?
James Baldwin, District 3 resident. I have in my hands letters addressed to my mailing address, which is on record with the county clerk's office, the county assessor's office, the county treasurer's office, from property we own out of state, from my credit card people, from Mr. Sodio's office. We have had the same mail carrier and its father for over 15 years. Our address is the same address that was given to us by the post office. It is the legal address for us from which we receive our mail. We, my wife and I, did not receive ballots. I spoke to the county clerk and he said that our ballots had been returned. We were disenfranchised. We've been disenfranchised from our right to vote. I don't know why, but we have had this mailing address since probably 1980 when the post office gave it to us. And we've had the same mail carrier and its father for over 15 years. There is a problem.
Okay, thank you.
I wish my wife and I, even though the vote has been over and done with, said and done, we would appreciate the right to vote by mail. If this, and we will be seeking legal advice, but we hope that this does not occur with many other people because we've been living at the same address since 1977. We haven't moved nor has our address changed.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion?
Again, I'd just like to reiterate what I said earlier is that our county clerk did do a good job letting people know that the election was going. I heard stuff on the radio telling people that if they didn't get their ballots, to make sure that they would call in and try and get them in time before the deadline. So, you know, I really do appreciate that you went and be on to, to get this done. Unfortunately, there are holes in the system and hopefully we can work on that and make it better in the future, but I know you did the best you could and we appreciate that.
And the best thing to do is contact the county clerk. There is a problem.
Further discussion? Yes, sir.
I want to say to you that regardless of, sometimes we do have the addresses correct, whether we clerk, the treasurer, the assessor all have the same address and there's times that the mail just doesn't get there. And so with all due respect to Mr. Baldwin, I just believe that there is a problem in the system, but I don't think the system is within Grant County because there are several people for years now that just don't get their, either their notice of value or their tax bill. And we all have the same address and for years they did get it. So I'm not trying to point fingers at anybody, but I just think that, you know, there's a glitch somewhere in the system and I don't believe it's within Grant County.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify saying aye. Aye. Motion passes. At this time, we have a motion to adjourn the Grant County Canvassing Board. So move. Second. All those in favor, signify saying aye. Aye. Motion passes. This time, we'll call to order the regular meeting of the Grant County Commission. First item on the agenda is to approve the regular meeting agenda. So move. Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the regular meeting agenda. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye. Aye. Motion passes. Public input. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question and answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Anyone who would like to discuss an item in more depth may request to be placed on a future agenda. Request forms are available in the county manager's office. Is there any public input today? Seeing none, we'll move on.
Yes, I thought it was already closed, but yes, please.
Okay. Please stand. Are you speaking about something that's on the agenda? Because you'll get a chance to talk at that time. Yes, it is. It's on H. Are you talking about Beavis and Rita Rhodes?
Yes, sir.
It's on the agenda.
It's H.
It's letter H.
It's H.
I thought you might be. Okay. Is there any other public input? Seeing none, we'll move on. We're going to have a public hearing to consider the adoption of County Ordinance Number 1204 entitled County by Local Option of the Liquor Control Act for Sunday Sales Without Beverage. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing and discussion regarding County Ordinance Number 1204. Is there any, anybody here who wants to talk about Ordinance 1204? Can I get a picture?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to get a little brief background on this. By state laws required to go in front of the voters to be able to sell liquor by the glass on Sundays in establishments that have liquor licenses. Grant County's been approached by several establishments in the county that sit outside of the municipal, the municipal limits about having this put in front of the voters in this general election that happens in November so that they would have the ability to sell liquor by the glass on Sundays in their restaurants. And so that's what this does. It's all it's doing is putting the question in front of the voters that if we would be able to allow those people to sell it. It's not giving new liquor licenses throughout the county or anything like that. It's current people that have liquor licenses just want to have the ability that when they are open on Sundays for lunch or dinner, that people would be able to buy a glass of wine or a drink, a beer, whatever their liquor license is, gives them the ability to do with their meal. And that's all this does for those individuals.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. At this time, we'll close the public hearing. I need a motion to approve or disapprove County Ordinance 1204.
Chairman Cast, I need to approve County Ordinance 1204.
Can I second? There's a motion and a second to approve County Ordinance Number 1204. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I just want to comment that I think this will help our small restaurants and other establishments with their business. So I'm happy that this will be on the ballot and hope it makes it.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, it will be on the ballot in November. But it's not automatic when the commission approves the ordinance. It's just automatic to be put on the ballot.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye. Aye. Motion passes. Minutes. Approve or disapprove September 11th regular meeting minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the September 11th, 2012 regular minutes.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve September 11th, 2012 regular meeting minutes. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye. Aye. Motion passes. Financial reports. John, you want to review August?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. In front of you are the financial reports dated August 31st, 2012. We'll start with the general fund. Cash balance of July 1st, 2012 was $3,707,696. Year-to-date revenues of $374,056. Operating expenditures of $549,943. Salary and benefits of $850,246. Leaves the cash balance August 31st of $2,681,563. With projected revenues, transfers and expenditures through June 30th, 2013 of a negative $374,559. Leaves the balance at June 30th, 2013 of $2,307,004. With the required cash reserve of $2,105,342. Leaves the surplus at June 30th of $201,662. When you turn to page two, you see that we've collected 4.2% of the budgeted revenues so far this year. Page three is our transfers and we've done 0% of the budgeted transfers out or in to the general fund. When you turn to the next page, it is the road fund for the month ending August 31st, 2012. The actual cash balance as of July 1st, 2012 was $426,531. Revenues year-to-date of $152,940. Operating expenditures of $43,305. And salary and benefits of $192,588. Leaves the cash balance as of August 31st of $343,578. With projected revenues, expenditures and transfers through June 30th, 2013 of negative Leaves the cash balance at June 30th, 2013 of $319,990. With the required reserve of $130,935. Leaves the surplus at June 30th, 2013 of $189,054. The next is the corrections fund. We have the actual cash balance of July 1st, 2012 of $363,330. Revenues year-to-date of $135,624. Expenditures of $44,135. Salary and benefits of $268,047. Leaves the cash balance of August 31st, 2012 of $186,772. With projected revenues, expenditures and transfers of a negative $110,567. Leaves a projected cash balance of June 30th, 2013 of $76,007.
Moving on to the next item. Approve or disapprove September 24th, 2012 expenditure report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The expenditure report dated September 24th, 2012, it's in your packet and it's for $848,238.40.
Not a lot.
Mr. Chairman? I'd like to make the motion that we approve the September 24th, 2012 expenditure report.
And I'll second that motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve the September 24th, 2012 expenditure report. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye. Aye. Motion passes. Moving on to new business. Item D. Approve or disapprove a proclamation declaring October 2012 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month?
And we have Maria Dominguez here representing El Refugio. Welcome. And Armando. So welcome both of you.
Would you guys like to say something?
We're all putting our pins on right now.
They hit them from us in the middle of our book, so we just now found them.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. Good morning, members of the board, Grant County staff members and Grant County residents. We stand before you today to stress the importance of domestic violence in our precious county. While we don't want to admit that it lives, there is the ugly monster out there that touches many of our lives in one fashion or another. El Refugio Incorporated will go forward one more time during the month of October to attempt to put a stop to the violence, but we need help. We need all of you and we need everyone outside this building and all over the world. Excuse me. We invite you, on October 4th, we will be having a standing together presentation to remember all the survivors, all the victims of domestic violence at golf park. And it's scheduled at 6 o'clock and it's scheduled for 15 minutes, so please come out and make a difference. We will be selling T-shirts. Hope T-shirts are going to be going for $15. It's a fundraiser. We were hit and hit big with our grants. We don't have the money that we've had in the past years to address domestic violence. And we will be selling, not selling, but giving away T-shirts. And I didn't bring them with me, but I'll make sure that all of you receive one. Purple bracelets with the slogan of "Love Shouldn't Hurt." Oh, there you go. Good, 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 good. Thank you very much. Lindsay, would you like to?
Well, it's more evident, you know, that domestic violence does hurt families, you know? And as time goes on, you know, the kids suffer more and as time goes on, they reflect back on that past, you know? And it's very difficult for them to try and blend into society, you know, with a balanced mind, you know? So this is why we're trying to avoid this, you know? In the early stages, if it starts happening, report it. You know, call someone, let someone know that it's happening. And when you start doing that, somewhere along the line, there'll be a stop to all this. Thank you.
Just a couple of other things. Our sheriff, Raúl Villanueva, is also a member of the board of directors and we do have openings on our board and it's a very worthy cause. So please come forward and let's put an end to domestic violence.
Maria, the event on the 4th, where's that going to be?
Golf park. And it will be for 15 minutes. We'll have an open mic, so you're all welcome to come forward and speak out.
Thank you very much. So at this time, I'm going to ask Commissioner Miller to start. This is a very long proclamation, so if she'll start reading and go until she runs out of breath, will somebody else take over?
Proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2012. Whereas homes should be a place of warmth, unconditional love, safety and peace. Tragically for many Americans, these are blessings that are tarnished by violence and fear. Domestic violence touches the lives of Americans of all ages, leaving a devastating impact on women, men and children of every background and circumstance. A family's home becomes a place of fear, hopelessness and desperation when a woman is battered by her partner, a child witnesses the abuse of a loved one, or a senior is victimized by family members. And whereas in 1994, passage of the landmark Violence Against Women Act, championed by then-Senator Joe Biden, our nation has strengthened its response to this crime and increased service for victims. We must continue our efforts to prevent and respond to domestic violence as we mourn those who have died because of domestic violence, celebrate those who have survived, and connect those who work to end violence at the local, state and national levels. And whereas, according to the Department of Justice, approximately 95% of the victims of domestic violence are women. Nationally, 4 million women a year are assaulted by their partners. Every day, at least four women are murdered by boyfriends or husbands. And in New Mexico, one in four adults will be victims of intimate partner domestic violence in their lifetime. This comes from a survey of violence victimization, February 2011. Commissioner Cast, I want to go.
Whereas, whereas, I mean, one in three female teenagers in a dating relationship is feared for her physical safety and one in five teenagers in a serious relationship reports having been hit, slapped, pushed by a partner. And the severity of violence among intimate partners has been shown to be greater in the cases where the pattern of violence has been established in adolescence. Whereas, the analysis of 2011 data from the New Mexico Interpersonal Violence Status Central Repository reports that the Grant County ranks sixth in the state at 9.4% for domestic violence incidents. Domestic violence is a major public health, social justice and human rights issue requiring particular attention and its interventions must be within the inclusion of both women and men at all levels. Men and women must work together to create models of egalitarian and respectful collaborations. Violence and abuse are never justified. Domestic violence, self-regulation regarding attitudes of superiority based on gender and devaluing of women, given the fact that most of the victims and survivors of domestic violence are women and children, and most perpetrators are men. It is important to dedicate this entire month to men working against domestic violence to open up the dialogue to exploring and discussing male-to-female violence in the home. It's important to understand how abuse takes root in our families and society and how this has happened in the context of multiple oppressions in order to move towards the right steps and heal and change. Healing from oppression and recovering positive aspects are traditions men can find real balance in their lives. Recapture a sense of belonging and become productive members of their communities. Nurturing fathers, good husbands, partners, role models for other men and boys and advocates for non-violence. Domestic violence is a learned behavior. As a learned pattern, it can be unlearned and replaced by nonviolent beliefs, attitudes, expectations and behaviors. Men need to be involved in helping to create safe, healthy families. Commissioner?
Sure. Whereas, since 1983, El Refugio has been actively involved in addressing domestic violence in our community. El Refugio has celebrated with numerous people and groups to respond, educate and bring awareness to all, to all people about domestic violence. At the same time that El Refugio works with men who have used violence against their partners and children, El Refugio engages men who have stopped their violence and want to continue their journey toward non-violence and men who have never used violence and want to join the work of eradicating domestic violence from our communities. El Refugio advocates are working with community men on a respectful, egalitarian and just approach so that the safety and well-being of survivors and their children is always at the center of the work with men. To this end, October 2012 DV Domestic Violence Awareness Month is designated for community men standing up and speaking out against domestic violence. These efforts will strengthen community capacity and enhance social change. Now therefore, we, the Grant County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim the month of October 2012 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urge all citizens to observe this month by becoming aware of the tragedy of domestic violence. Supporting those who are working toward its end make a personal commitment to be a voice against domestic violence and to participate in community efforts to end violence and wear each Friday the Domestic Violence Hope T-shirt and solidarity, solidarity, solidarity for peace in our community. In witness thereof, we set our hands and cause the official seal of Grant County to be fixed this 25th day of September, 2012.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Chairman Cast, I need to approve October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
And I second. There's a motion and a proper second to approve October 2012 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Is there any discussion on that motion?
I'd just like to comment that the numbers are always alarming when we see these things and I hope that we can do everything possible to eradicate or lessen abuse and I appreciate everything El Refugio does. I'm glad that the county was able to help you because I know it's been a hard time for you, so I commend you and thank you for taking care of people that are abused in our county.
Thank you. At this time, all those in favor, signify saying aye. 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 Motion passes. Come on up and we'll get a picture. Mary Austin, official county photographer. She works cheap. That's why we keep her on. and Gus Benakis. the appointment of Judy O'Loughlin and Gus Benakis as new members of the movement of Juan Castaneda.
And the move.
Is that removal?
I think they're moving Juan to his.
Move. And the movement of Juan Castaneda from the community organization sector to the Forest Service sector of the Grant County Community Health Council. Okay, I got it.
Tiffany's there.
Tiffany, oh, you gotta talk twice, huh?
I will, I'm next on the agenda, so if you'd like to. I can just stand, yeah.
We do have to approve this, sir. Go ahead.
Go ahead. So yeah, we have two new members up for vote. The first is Gus Benakis for representing Silver Schools. He is gonna potentially be a permanent member pending the new superintendent, once that superintendent is hired. And then Judy O'Loughlin is to replace Pete Walden, who had to step down from his position. So she's very excited to potentially be part of the council. And then Juan Castaneda was part of community organizations for a long time, but we feel that with the nature of fires in our community, it's really important to have the Forest Service represented. And so he was appointed or asked to appoint, be appointed for the Forest Service on the health council.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the appointments in the movement? So move.
Second.
The motion to approve the appointment of Judy O'Loughlin and Gus Benakis as new members and the movement of Juan Castaneda from community organization sector to the Forest Service sector. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, so you can probably say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Next item on the agenda, coincidentally, Grant County Community Health Council. Oh, Tiffany, hi.
Hi. Thank you, honorable commissioners, for allowing me to be here. And for the community members that are present, I'm Tiffany Knopf. I'm the Health Council Board Leader. Officially been on the job for a year and a half, so I'm very happy to work with you. Just wanted to update you on two items. First is our community assessment. I came here end of April to let you know that we were kicking off our community assessment this year and just wanted to update you to date as to where we are. We currently have 4,600 surveys completed and returned, so we're very excited about that. Health council members have turned out in huge numbers this summer to help us make sure that we get this response rate. We've been at over 75 community events. That's an average of a little more than six meetings or events a week, so we've really hit the ground running for this survey. We do have three weeks left to reach our goal of 5,001, so we'd really appreciate any community members that haven't filled it out or any organizations to contact us. If you guys have any thoughts of places we need to be, make sure you let us know. We're still, we'll give a few weeks till the end of October for those few extra surveys to come back to us. So if people have them in their possession and need to mail them back, we'll give them a couple of weeks to do so. We're looking forward to release our Grant County profile, which is all of the data from our assessment as well as any other community-wide data that's gathered. That'll be released in January of 2013. So we're looking forward to kick off the year in a quick fashion. And then finally, in front of you is our 2013 resource directory. We do update and release that about every year. This is our community-wide resource directory. So it has all low-cost or no-cost services in Grant County that community members might not be aware of. So you do have a copy in front of you. It is also available on our website if you need to access that. And our website is G C C H C dot org. So all three resource directories are uploaded and available on our website.
Tiffany, it's a very nice document, by the way.
Great, thank you.
Can we give information as to how people can contact you for the survey?
Yes, absolutely. If you need the survey, you can either go on our website and take it electronically. We'll be doing over 50 drawings the month of September, so if you take it online, there's a little extra bonus there. Otherwise, you can contact our office at phone number 575-388-1198. Yeah, the website is G C C H C dot org.
Any other questions for Tiffany?
Thank you, Tiffany.
Thank you.
Have a nice day. Next item on the agenda is Mr. Ronnie Sandoval to continue this discussion regarding Loma Verde Road, Corto Road and Acorn Road for county road maintenance.
Good morning, Mr. Sandoval. There was one road that wasn't mentioned in there and that was Quintana.
Quintana?
Quintana.
Quintana?
Yeah. That's the last road. I think it was called Canyon Road. So as you see, the document that I gave you, it, this is a dedication that was given back in 1979. I guess the big discussion was that it was never dedicated and we're hoping that it does get dedicated. I know I've talked to several of you beforehand about this document. I just wanna let everybody, everybody know that it does exist and that we need to, or hopefully you guys do the right thing and get it dedicated.
And we've been looking since Mr. Sandoval found this document with Anthony. They went and found it. We've talked and we've had Rob look in and we, as far as I know, we haven't found anything where it's been officially accepted by the commission. It's been recorded in the clerk's office, but it was never, we couldn't find any meeting minutes or anything and I don't know if you found anything else, Ronnie?
No, I haven't.
We've never found where it came in front of the commission and formally accepted it. And not because this road, just to give you, is anybody can take anything in and record it in the clerk's office and the clerk will record it, but it doesn't necessarily have to come through the commission to be recorded. And so that's what could have happened, we don't know. Because none of us were there in 1979 to know what happened. So if we're gonna go forward, I think that, you know, Dave would have to look at it and we would probably have to bring it in front of the commission and say, here's a dedication that was given, do you wish to accept this? Because we haven't found anything where that portion has happened.
And Dave, you just now got this or you had to?
I just now got this. The second component of the dedication would also be the maintenance provision. To address Mr. Sandoval, commissioners, the second provision of the dedication would be the, the second element would be the acceptance of the maintenance provisions as well. So that's also a document that we have to look for in the minutes of these meetings. This is one component of a two-component phase for county maintained roads.
Okay, thank you. I think Mr. Sandoval understood that, that he knows that the dedication of a road has nothing to do with the maintenance of a road.
And I'll further look into this and get back to the commission.
So we're still searching for documents?
Now, can we, since these were dedicated in 79, we also need to make sure that this commission can accept those dedications so we can move forward with the road improvement district for Loma Verde.
That's correct.
So that would be something I'd be very interested in. Because whatever we do, we can't break, we can't break the rules and we can't break the laws.
That's right.
And I think the most important thing is that we're setting precedent for the future. I mean, we know there's a lot of people now talking about their roads, which is good. We need to talk about it, but we need to make sure we do the right thing and set precedents and get things done the same way every time. So I think we need to start some kind of a process and policy for road.
Yeah, and that's one thing that myself and Mr. Gorman have talked about and I've talked with past county attorneys is I think we need to come up with a process that's very clear so that the public understands what the process would be for an improvement district. Because we've never, I mean, there's been one done in the past, but recently, so we have the whole process. We spoke about before, we don't know if the road department has the time to do the improvement districts. One thing that I've talked with commissioners in the past is that, you know, possibly what we did is we went out for a contractor that would do our roads. And so when Mr. Sandoval came, if the commission wanted to do that, this contractor would go out, look at the roads, come back with a price and say, this is what it would cost for us to bring these roads to county standards, if that's what it would be. And then we would go forward with that, with the improvement district. If we do find a document in our research, because I know Ronnie's been diligent, he's here all his free time researching records. It's a good spokesman for the group. If we found something where maintenance was accepted by the commission, then it's a different story. Then it's Grant County's responsibility to bring the roads up to the current standards. But like Dave said, we haven't found that document yet and we haven't found where this went. In front of the commission, we just have found this has been recorded at the clerk's office.
Well, it's nice though that we at least found the dedications.
Yeah.
Hopefully we don't have to go through the process that we talked about last time, each and every resident having to dedicate their portion of the property to the project to get it even started. So I think we're moving in the right direction, Ronnie.
Okay, so we can't, what you're saying is we can't make, or you can get a vote on accepting the dedication that was logged in, you know.
But it's not on the agenda to vote on today.
Okay. So you give me, I was hoping to get everything lined up as far as what was needed to get, to be one step ahead on the process.
Right.
Never was it ever mentioned to me that a maintenance contract now needed to be along with this dedication. The dedication was a dedication that was to, they dedicated the whole subdivision in there, which includes all the roads. Now it's a maintenance agreement or?
I think it specifically said in the 1979, Anthony, you got that?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have it with me. But it's in all the subdivision, I guess it was a 1979 subdivision record that we found, the ads amendment started in 1980. But it was specific to the county commission accepting the roads for maintenance, just like it is today. There's two, it was a two-part, the same dedication and maintenance. I think what John was talking about was that in order to do an assessment district, the very first portion of the assessment district is to verify that the county has the resources to do the improvements. Whether or not the county can do the improvements themselves or, as John mentioned, hire a contractor to do those improvements is still undecided. That's the first portion. Because you asked about that, what needed to be done in order to get this in motion, that would be the first thing, is to assess whether the county could have the resources and/or the capacity to improve the roads.
I think the key thing that comes up is accepting the right-of-way is totally different than accepting the maintenance into perpetuity on a road.
That's correct. And even in those older subdivision regs, it states that specifically.
Yeah, I just wanna clarify, you don't have to have a maintenance agreement. I'm saying if we continue to look and we were able to find one, then that changes and it's not an improvement district anymore because maintenance has already been accepted.
Oh, I see.
It's not a requirement. I was just saying, if we're able to find that document, it changes the whole aspect of what we do from here on out.
And what would that document be?
It would be a document that would be recorded in the clerk's office in the large room where you found this document. I mean, it's, it's a paperwork nightmare and that's why it's so hard. I mean, we'll proceed down this other road of the improvement district, have Dave looking at stuff. And what I'm saying, continue, we can continue to look and see if we can find something else. Robert's been looking at the minutes to see if he could ever look for it and didn't find anything in this timeframe where the commission had ever seen this document. So we're looking for these things because if you actually find one of these missing pieces like you found this, it starts to change things and makes it a little easier sometimes.
Well, let me ask you this question then. Was this necessary back in 1979 when it was dedicated?
To have the commission accept maintenance, yes.
The maintenance?
Yes, yeah. It was still a requirement of the subdivision regulations at that point in time. The commission had to accept maintenance separate than dedication. The dedications and maintenance are two different things. It's, you have, you have roads that are private roads in the county. You have roads that have been dedicated. What this is saying is it's dedicated as a public road. So public can travel on the road, I could park on the side of the road and watch the elk run. I could do what I need to do as a public and you couldn't throw me off of that road because it's a public road. Then there's public roads that are county maintained roads. So there's the three types. So this is just designated as a public road, as a public can access and use and not so much that Grant County's gonna maintain. It's not making it a CMR road, it's just making it a public road in the county.
Anthony, there's one other thing, since we started this discussion, I just remembered that we did some research back and in 1978, the county commission actually opened it up to the public to make requests for their roads to be county maintained. It was one of the only times that I ever saw something like that happen. People were able to bring to the county commission the roads that they wanted to maintain and they kinda did a blanket-type agreement with the residents of Grant County. Some of those documents are at the road department. I don't know if they are in the clerk's office, but I know that it happened. And because you can tell, the roads actually changed maintenance. We have the records up from the 1950s up to 1978 and the way that they recorded the roads have changed. There was a lot of roads added, there was some taken away, there was a lot of things happened in 1978. I think that kinda predates maybe this, what's happened, the dedication right now. But I know that that happened, so there may be some documentation at the road department.
So it's a matter of finding these documents, is where we're at right now.
Well, I guess there's two ways to, I mean, yeah, there's kinda two ways to go. We start down the process of, this has never been dedicated to the commission and we're looking at, Dave's looking at, can we accept this dedication that happened in 1979 and this commission approved that? We move forward with the improvement district. But then we're also looking for other records. But if we find these other records, then that changes. If this was a group of roads that was in that 1978 thing that Anthony just spoke of, then they've already been accepted by maintenance by this blanket thing. And then we don't do an improvement district, we just get out and start maintaining roads is what Anthony's saying. So there's, there's two lines of travel depending on what information you found.
The only bad thing about that, Mr. Chairman, is that, as Rob had mentioned earlier and it's difficult to research those old minutes because they weren't done the same as they are today. Sometimes it's pretty vague about the decisions they made and they're not very, they're not very accurate. So we have to take that into consideration.
And when you're looking for all these documents, I think one thing to consider is going back to the title company, did your title for your property? And talk to them, I mean, they're experts at looking up this information. And I definitely would start there. I know you're coming in and spending a lot of hours here. They can find that stuff for you really quick, okay? So I would recommend to talk to your title company to do your search for you.
Sometimes, sometimes they actually have documentation. It's difficult to find in the clerk's office.
Well, I know some of these title companies exactly have more information than we even do in our.
Now, will I be privy to the records at the maintenance? I can just go in there anytime and look up these records?
Privy, go ahead. What records?
At the maintenance.
The road. Their public records?
Their public records. You should make the request that you use the records. We'll have them there and you can go down and look at them. Just a written, I think Randy has a form, do you have a count? For public inspection and you can do it. And it's not that I don't trust you, it's just we're trying to follow the same process so I don't tell you something different than anybody else had asked. We have a form that you can just say, I'd like to inspect these records. We'll say, okay, they're available for you to inspect. You go down and look at them and then you pay 25 cents a copy if you want a copy of one.
I think probably what we ought to do though is, since we know this is coming down the pipe, is we ought to just get an appointment with Anthony when he can go down there. First of all, you're gonna be head and shoulders ahead of yourself because he knows where the records are.
Sure.
So if he finds something that's pertinent to the situation, we're gonna make our own copies, you don't have to do that. Because we're not trying to keep you from having roads, we just wanna make sure we do it right.
Sure, I understand that. I'm just, I know that the county is very busy and they got a lot of projects going on and I don't want our efforts here to be pushed aside because there's another road that might be more important to somebody else that is pushing to have it done.
And there are.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know how it is.
I think we have to set policy. I think that's what he's trying to say. I think the county should set policy. And that's why we should be involved in the research and I'll certainly make it a point.
So if you can just get an appointment with Anthony, we'll get this thing going and I promise you it won't drop in a crack.
Hey Ronnie, we understand your frustration. We all have worked very, very hard if there's some appreciation that.
And as you can see, I have, I'm sorry, I do have a lot of people from the subdivision that are here today taking, you know, their time out of their busy schedules and work schedules too. You know, it's not, it's not something they've forgotten about. They've been fighting for this thing for, I think. They've been fighting for this thing for, I think, 30 years or more and I don't want to give them false, false hope coming up here saying, you know, every time a meeting comes up, it's, well, we need this, well, we need this. They're willing to sign everything that, that is necessary to be signed and we're not looking for a handout. We're gonna, we won't, we'll pay for it. You know, so, you know, the county can get material at a, at a better rate than anybody else and I know that they, so winter's coming up, you know, they're, they're going to need a lot of projects and Roma Prairie is a, is a good project though to keep in place. You know, it's, I mean, it's a win-win situation for everybody. You know, we're, we're willing to pay. We're not, we're not here looking for a handout. We just want a helping hand.
Yes, sir. And I know on the next item, there's roads that no one's paying taxes on, so, but on this one here, do you know who are paying, who's paying taxes on these actual easements? Is there someone paying taxes on these easements? Mr. Sudea?
Um, I haven't looked into it.
Yeah, we've looked at those.
If you need me to, I'd be happy to.
Please do. That kind of puts us at ease too because if no one's paying taxes on them, they're usually the, up to the county. Yeah, and on the maps inside the, on our GIS map, it shows that the landowners own to the center line.
Okay, that's okay. Not like the next issue.
Yeah, it appears as though they would be paying tax because they own to the center line.
To the center line, okay. Okay. Anything else to stand on?
Not at this time. I appreciate your time.
Hey, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is Mr. Robert Floyd to request the status and future of Viva Santa Rita area roads, Miners Legend Road and Neeling Nun Road. Welcome to the podium. State your name for the record, please.
Robert Duane Floyd.
I see you.
First, I'd like to thank everybody here for their service. I know all too often, not unlike the military, always got to go underappreciated and you're the victims all too often of overzealous people that hadn't done their due diligence. I don't think that's the case here and I want to apologize upfront if I get a little hurt. My uncle has lived here all his life. He's going through cancer and he's got a bad problem with his hip. Every time we drive down this road, he goes to excruciating pain, no matter how slow. My concern is not just for the neighbors and they're good people. They're good people here. I want to live here, that's testimony to the good people I see. I have roots here, my mom grew up in Hanover. There was a life-threatening situation down in Mount. There's a man here that can testify to that because the ambulance had to go so slow in this hard condition to get out. Now, I know you're public servants, but I am totally under your control now and I want to try and get this matter resolved in whatever form's the best. And the runaround form, me to do what my public servant ought to be doing, I don't believe is correct. I think that there's potential for fiduciary responsibilities with the county and I appreciate the fact I'm not trying to fix the land, let's fix the problem because it built way back before any of you guys were here. But if somebody gets hurt on that road, it could be a child, consider one of your own children riding the bicycle. It gets caught in one of these gullies of these big boulders and it's documented problems with vehicles, but that damage is way secondary to a kid or a human being. I'm not asking anybody to spend any more money. In fact, I see a lot of ways you can save a lot of money. Now, there's a lot of people in this neighborhood and they're good people. I've dove on countless roads. They go to nowhere, they're serviced nothing but a bunch of cattle or livestock that I can see, even some private property and I don't know why the county maintains that. Now, I asked the commissioner in Baird about one in particular right across the street from us, Lamp Bright Road. And he said, oh no, those signs shouldn't be in there, I'll go talk to them and have them taken down.
That's not what I said.
I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry.
I said, that's not what I said. I said, we will check on that. If we, if they are posting that road, we'll deal with it. I didn't say I would go talk to them, I did not say I would take care of them.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, if you're going to quote me, please quote me proper.
Okay, I'm sorry. And I don't know why the animosity, but I'm sorry.
Because you quoted me incorrectly.
Well, I don't have it, but I can get it because it's recorded and I will quote you correctly next time.
Thank you.
And then we have the sheriffs here because I don't understand, here's three no trespassing passing signs by three entities that the county maintains. I don't get it. Now, I would ask for one minute at the end for the people that have suffered more than me and they're a lot longer than me to have a say so because surely I'll forget something. But all's I can ask is, did we do the right thing? And all too often, I know it ends up in a lawyer's lap. And the lawyer works for us. I've worked with them most of my life, but we have to remember they work for us and it's us that suffers if we don't do the right thing and let them make us do the wrong thing because they can somehow justify stupidity, deceit, and lies. I'm not saying they would, I'm saying all too often. So I don't know if there's an issue with private property or not. I'm glad the sheriff's here because that's a lawful issue I should take up with him and say, hey, this is an unlawful act. Surely it is. And I don't know if a private citizen has a right to cross those bounds, but I know one of the things that says scenic route, I don't like this country, I love these people. I didn't get 25 feet coming in from the member's side and guess what I ran into? No trespassing. Well, hell, I'm confused and I'll admit, if it is naked, it bit me. I bought a coffee in and ignorance of the law is no excuse. Don't, I broke the law, but not intentionally, because I looked around here and I saw these cups and I thought, well, it must be all right. But I guess that should be safe only for the public. Now, like I said, I'm sorry for being crazy. Yet this judge, you were at your mercy. We have other resources, but I would hope we can find a better form to resolve them in. Because surely the shame will come down upon people that don't deserve it and I don't wish for that to happen. And there's nobody that wins if it gets into court of law, everybody loses in my life when we should have simply done the right thing to start with. We have documentation that we feel very comfortable that this issue squarely in the county's land and that you do have fiduciary responsibilities. I know you need to take it up with your lawyer and I ask for one minute. Does anybody else want to say a word?
Absolutely.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning and thanks for hearing us. There are 19 families that live on mine.
State your name, sir.
I'm sorry. Zenshin Rappunchuk. There are 19 families that live on Miners Legend and Neeling Nun and those on Gold Rush have to use Miners Legend. Because of work, some of them are not here, but there are 11 families represented here this morning that are interested in the maintenance of our road. And the point was brought up when you were talking to Mr. Sandoval about the fact that there has to be a dedication record. And I have Appendix F of the County Road Ordinance, Section 6, that says, beginning in 1982, it had to be clear with a separate document, a maintenance agreement, that the county was maintaining the road. Evidently, it was unclear because they say the statutory provision after 1981 makes it clear that the county need not maintain the roads until the road fully conforms and the roads are accepted for maintenance in a separate application procedure. So evidently, before and during the time that our road was accepted, which was October 9th of 1981, it was not required that you have a separate maintenance agreement. Otherwise, they wouldn't have had to make it clear. I, I know, I don't know about the other subdivision, but in ours, we do not own our roads. The, the road is a 60-foot road. So we don't pay taxes on it. I don't believe the subdivider is paying taxes on it, which means that it is the county's. So I'd like you to consider this, that if we cannot find an acceptance, that our plat from 1981 be accepted and that what's happened is a mistake for 31 years. And of course, it's, the road's in terrible condition, I'm sure there are lots in the county that are and there are a lot of families affected. This is probably as dense a section of county road that is in as bad as any others for you to consider to accept.
Thank you very much. Anthony? Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, please correct the document. He has states, it's in the 1995 and in the 1997 subdivision regs, but as we saw, the 1979 has virtually the same language in that it not only has to be dedicated, but it has to be accepted by the county for maintenance. So there's still, still the same situation whether or not it predated 1981.
Well, the question becomes the same though. Who's got responsibility? Why does fiduciary responsibility of maintenance? Normally, it would be the owner, wouldn't it? Legally, I can't do anything to that road and even if I want to, I have to come to you to get approval and then I have to buy insurance to spend my money to fix your road. I just ask you all to consider and do the right thing because it is a matter of who owns it.
That's, that's correct, sir. But, but there are, in subdivisions, there are ways that, besides county maintenance, if you look at the regulations themselves, you can have land divisions that have private roads, you can have a, a homeowners association maintaining the roads. Even though they're public, you still have that agreement and/or you can have the county maintain those roads. But that's, that's specific on whenever the...
Well, my question becomes, why did the county accept the property if it wasn't up to standard?
Well, except, it accepts the, accepts for use of the public. There's two different things. You accept for use of the public and you accept maintenance.
Okay, then why does the county maintain private property?
It wouldn't maintain private property.
As far as I can tell, you do it all over the place.
That's, that's not correct, sir. They accept those road, they accept the road for maintenance or they have an easement.
Then our sheriff, doing due diligence, needs to talk to some property owners at times, they need to come down. One or the other, right?
Also, sir, and I'm not speaking for the sheriff, but a property owner can post his property as long as he doesn't deny access or post the roadway itself.
What you've done to us, I'm, I'm sorry for interrupting, but what you're doing to us and all the families out here is you're denying us the right to have a safe environment for our children, for our vehicles. Now, is that right? Because you can't deny that, you're denying it.
Anthony, what we need to do is we need to have a meeting with these people and go through the process of what it takes and, and start doing our due diligence also on that because we're not going to solve that here today. We don't have the records. I've met with Mr. Floyd now twice. After I met with the first gentleman that came by, I brought to you the plat. I have gone and looked at the roads with the roads superintendent. I have met with the attorney and the manager both on these issues. So we are moving the ball forward and we do want to take these roads. We want to do it right. And I say to Mr. Floyd, we want to do it without breaking any statutes or any rules. So we're going to go through the process and do it right.
Once again, I don't know the correct form and maybe this isn't the time, maybe we can get together later. Apparently, this probably isn't the right form and we're willing to, to hear any, any remedy that you think could get us...
After the first time you came to meet with me, I advised you to meet with Anthony. Have you met with Anthony yet?
I talked to Gabriel, I talked to Mr. Sudea and the man you asked me to talk to wasn't in.
Okay. That's, that's Anthony Decheris, right there, the guy you put us in. And that's, that's where we need to get started in the process.
Well, my process, and I'm trying to understand, forgive me for being ignorant, and I confess I'm stupid in a lot of ways, but I thank God I'm not smart like a lawyer. I'd rather have common sense. I understand we have to have a form of commission, that's two out of three to get approved, right? Why do I need to talk to him?
Because us alone cannot make a decision. He will be the person that brings whatever documents to us to ask us to be, to get it approved, him or the county manager.
Do the commissioners not have access to the documents?
One at a time, but we can't talk about it until we get here.
Can you not ask?
So he's the one that puts it together.
Well, once again, I don't know how the thing works, it's his job to what? But is it my job to do the research and find out how to do due diligence?
Well, Anthony's actually going to do the research and then meet with you.
Okay, well then, okay. I understand. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we're going to take a five-minute recess and we'll reconvene at about 15 after here. Morning for a while. Come back to order the Grant County Commission meeting of September 25th, 2012. Next item on the agenda is contracts and agreements. Item I, approve or disapprove amendment to agreement number A-1131, professional services agreement with Yolanda Manzano for the services with the juvenile probation office. This is going to be a decrease by $3,067. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Yeah, this is part of that restorative justice program that Grant County's been the fiscal agent for, for about the last four years. They're in the process of issuing a new grant to continue forward, so they had a little extra money, so that's what Margaret is doing, is trying to use it up and play with it and move those monies around. And so this will be decreasing this one with Yolanda so she can try and use the monies elsewhere to get it all spun up. And there's currently a group working to put together a new RFP to continue these type of services going forward, but it'll only be, currently it's in the Sixth Judicial District, so it's giving Luna, or it's Luna, Grant and Hidalgo Counties. The new agreement will be working just in Grant County. They'll be focusing on just doing Grant County, so it'll be a little different going forward if that's approved later on in the year.
Thank you. Motion to approve or disapprove?
Our Chairman, Gas, I move to approve amendment to agreement number A-1131.
I second. There's a motion to approve the amendment to A-1131. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item J, approve or disapprove the amendment to agreement number A-1132, professional services agreement with Randall Compton for services within the juvenile probation office, a decrease by $7,245. Same thing, John?
Seeing it, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, yes, this is the same thing, that they're just trying to move their monies around and use them as wisely as they can, just a little extra revenues they have in the old grant.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion, do we approve the amendment to agreement number A-1132?
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion in proper second to amend the agreement A-1132. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item K, approve or disapprove agreement number A-1244, professional services agreement with Lorraine Zunich for services in the Silver School District as a part of the juvenile probation office in the amount of $3,150. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is part of that restorative justice grant that Mrs. Zunich will go in and she'll work in the schools for that $3,150. It equates to six hours at $35 an hour, 18 weeks. So it's just to work in those schools to, to try and help that program continue, like I said, until they finish out that grant. She has, this one is the silver and the next item is the same thing and it's going to be for the Luna and Hidalgo Counties to go into those two counties and work in the schools there as well.
Uh, Chairman, Gas, I move to approve agreement number A-1244.
Can I second? There's a motion to approve agreement number A-1244. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item L, approve or disapprove agreement number A-1245, professional services agreement with M. Lorraine Zunich for services in Luna and Hidalgo Counties as part of the juvenile probation office in the amount of $3,240.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Like you spoke about, this is for Mrs. Zunich to do that work in Luna and Hidalgo and the why, the reason why they did two agreements and separated it out is they're trying to, as they... trying to, as they go forward to get the grants for the next year, they're trying to show the difference between what happened in Grant County and what happened in those two counties when we were together. Because what they were seeing is all the monies weren't being spent by those counties. So they want to show that Grant County actually did the work and spent the monies and can use more monies going forward to help these kids in that restorative justice program.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion, do we approve agreement number A-12-45?
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion to approve agreement number A-1245. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item M, approve or disapprove agreement number A-1246, professional services agreement with Randall Compton for services in the Deming School District as a part of the juvenile probation office in the amount of $9,906.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is part of that same grant, spending up that money. This is for 16.6 hours per week at $35 an hour for seventeen weeks, to go into the Deming School Districts and try and work those last circles before the grant money runs out.
Chairman Cast, I move to approve agreement number A-12-46.
Can I second? There's a motion to approve agreement number A-1246. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Resolutions. Item M, approve or disapprove amendment to resolution R-1238, authorization and submission of an application to the Electoral Environment Department for the appropriation project for the Fort Bear Medical Sewer System improvements. That's a tongue twister, right there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We had this on the last meeting, this is, there's $100,000 that was appropriated to Grant County to work on a booster station, lift station at the Fort Bear Medical Center. One of the new requirements was we adopted a resolution, we adopted a resolution allowing me to sign, and as well as the chairman. And they came back and they didn't like our resolution, and they wanted us to add Anthony Gutierrez, County Planner, as successor Jacob Zamora, as a grantee, designee, and the chairman as a signature. Jacob didn't have a role, and they didn't like that Jacob didn't have a role in the last resolution. And so this is the first time we've ever had to do these. It's a new requirement that we've never seen. So that's what this does, is it just changes the language to specifically spell out that Anthony is the designee and Jacob is his successor as the procurement officer, so that they'll be happy on that end and get us one step closer to getting at the $100,000.
Make them happy, so that way they can file four more pieces of paper up there to the Environment Department.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion, we approve amendment number resolution R-12-38.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion and a proper second to amend resolution R-1238. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove resolution R-1239, adopting an infrastructure capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2014-2018. Anthony, would you like to go over that?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Members of the commission, there was only a few changes to the ICIP plan. The priorities are still the same as we had discussed at our last meeting. I added, I changed the language in the, for the administrative facility here to include the service department and upgrades that are being requested for the sheriff's department. And also, I added, 2014 requests, I added Grant County infrastructure upgrades, which would include any infrastructure owned by Grant County, whether it's roads, buildings, et cetera. That way we could, that would, it's a little bit more specific. I was going to print up all these documents, but you know, it's a bit plastic, and I didn't know, I mean, I'm just going to save a treat.
Yeah, that is in response to, the chairman had said he wanted to make sure we had money for roads, Tyrone area, things like that. And so instead of specifically naming out areas, what Anthony and I talked about is putting in their infrastructure upgrades. So infrastructure upgrades could be lighting system at Baton Memorial Park, it could be our roadways, the North Hurley, the, yeah, anything that Earl can't get LGRF funds for. So it left it more wide open for us, that it's our infrastructure, and not pinpointing a certain thing, and then all of a sudden something else comes up. It's wide open, that we can say it's on the ICIP under that if it comes up throughout the year.
Yeah. The projects I specifically mentioned were North Hurley Road, because it's crumbling off the edges and getting narrower every day. It needs to be, needs to be repaired. And then Tyrone's always been kind of a model community, company town bought out, and we're in charge of maintaining those roads now. And if we don't maintain them, we're going to lose them, and there's going to be a lot of money to replace them. So chip sailing Tyrone is something. But the two specific projects I mentioned.
And that's why we put that as infrastructure upgrades, so we could encompass those items and then anything else. Like I said, Baton Park, the lighting system, if we go after lighting money, we can say it's on our infrastructure.
There also may be some changes. For instance, if we have a road that's washed out or something, and we have capital monies that could assist in fixing it, a lot needs to be covered under this, in our ICIP. That's all I've got.
Okay. Any other questions, Anthony, on the ICIP? Can I get a motion to approve it?
Chairman Cast, I move to approve resolution number R-12-39.
A second? A motion and proper second to approve resolution R-1239, the infrastructure capital improvement plan. This is, just to let you guys know, this is basically the county's priorities for capital improvement. If anybody wants to know what the county's priorities are, the top five are listed right there. So at this time, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, at this time, we're going to recess with the Grant County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Grant County Indigent Healthcare Claims Board. Can I get a motion to recess?
Second.
All those in favor, signal five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Call to order the Grant County Indigent Healthcare and Claims Board. First item on the agenda is to approve or disapprove the August 2012 indigent claims.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Currently, there are 847 claims for $475,035.96 that are part of the sole community provider piece of the indigent fund. And then there are eight claims totaling $16,640.17 under the indigent, the outer county claims, for a total of 855 claims for $491,676.13. It's been approved by Ms. Allred from the hospital, who manages that for us, and it's also been approved by Jacob Zamora, that the funds are there for the commission to approve.
Chairman Cast, I move to approve the August 2012 indigent claims.
Can I second? There's a motion and a second to approve the August 2012 indigent claims. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Can I get a motion to adjourn the Grant County Indigent Healthcare Claims Board?
Second.
All those in favor, signal five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Call back to order the Grant County Board of Commissioners. At this time, we'll stand for county reports. Sheriff, you're down there on the end, you have something for the good of the commissioner today?
I do, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I just wanted to report that the last two weekends, we had some ATV training that was provided to my staff. The reason why we're doing that training is we're going to start being a little more proactive in certain areas of the county in regards to property crime that we've been experiencing. I want the people to know that we are diligent, looking at the stuff that's happening. We also want to report that we did have seven vehicles that were burglarized on September the 20th, on the 2100 block of Cottage Sand Road. What happened is people are leaving their vehicles unlocked, so I encourage the people to lock their vehicles, lock their homes if they're not there, prevent them from getting into them pretty easy. But we're looking at certain people on that already, needs on that. But I do encourage the public to please contact us if they see anything suspicious or see anybody that don't belong in the area. My officers will respond, and we'll look at them and look at, see what they're doing in the area. I also want to report, this week is the Crete Hila Fair. It's going to be a very busy week for us. We're going to be concentrating a lot of our resources out there. But I do also want to let the people know to be careful out there. We are going to be in full force, watching for underage drinking, drinking and driving, stuff like that. But other than that, I have nothing else to report unless you have any questions.
Are there some areas that are dark for these, uh, vehicle break-ins?
That evening, we had the 2100 block of Cottage Sand Road, which is further up towards Bear Mountain. We think it was just some kids walking by, checking on doors and finding open vehicles. So this happened between nine o'clock at night and eight o'clock the next morning. So it was done during the night. Also, we did have some report that I forgot to report to you guys, is some graffiti that was done in Fort Bear. We have some people that are out spray painting, trying to tag in that. If they see anybody out there doing it, to please report it. They might be doing something not that serious, but it could turn into something else that we can uncover out of it. But you know, we do ask for the public's help, I think law enforcement and the public working together, we can make this community a little bit safer, so I encourage the public to please call us for anything.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Just real quick, the, wrapped up the 2012 with your acceptance of the tax aids, those are in the system, a couple of minor checks there before we send them over to the treasurer. The other thing, I have employees working, the reappraisal plan that I put together for you in April of this year, we're working on that very hard, so I want to thank my staff. They are working in the Mimbres area, the upper Mimbres area, and so they do have badges, they do have their photograph ID with them. The cars are marked with county assessor logos on them, so if they have any questions, they can call my office, 574-0030. The other thing I do want to recognize, the state of New Mexico requires employees of the assessor's office to become New Mexico certified appraisers. And by doing that, we go to New Mexico Tech each year and take week long courses with the four hour exam on Friday. Carrie Powell, one of my employees, has passed her second course, so I want to congratulate her. They didn't want to come into the meeting, and so I'm really proud of her. She's a graduate of Western Michigan University. Alexandra Perel also completed her first course. She's been with us just over a year, and that, I'm really pleased with her employment to our office. She's been a great asset, both of them have, and my whole staff. I just want to thank them all for the work that they've done this year. As you know, we did not increase the values in 2012, but I did go out and review, I'm trying to, in my reappraisal plan that I did put together, that's mandated by the state, is sections of the county that I'm trying to work on the hardest, that haven't been seen in a number of years, and for a lot of reasons, personnel shortage and so on. But we are working hard, and I just want to thank my employees for that. Unless you have any questions, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. I just want to let everybody know that both people that are on my delinquent list for property taxes should be receiving a letter this week or next from Taxation and Revenue. There will be a phone number and a gentleman's name that you can contact. In the past, we used to allow people to come in and make partial payments on their taxes if they were delinquents. I got a new directive from the New Mexico Finance Administration and Tax and Rev that everything must be paid in full now. We are no longer able to take partial payments, which we're not in agreement with. Our affiliate chair is working, is talking to Cecilia Cundana up with Tax and Rev. She sent a new mail out. They're not budging on that, and I know there's going to be a lot of people in Grant County going to be affected by this, and we'll see what happens. They're still working on some issues, but anybody that comes in and wants to make a partial payment, if they're on my tax sale list, we cannot accept that payment. It must be paid in full. So there are some other issues, whereas we were told that we could never refuse a payment, and now they're telling us that we have to. So I mean, there's some issues that we're trying to work out right now. It was a stunner when we got the letter and got an email, it was a hard copy yesterday. So I know there's going to be some people in Grant County that are going to be affected, so if they have any questions, have them call me direct at 574-0061, and I'll be happy to sit and visit with them. And probably the second week in October, they should be here from Tax and Rev to start working that list. So if they want to meet with us, you know, please call me or come by the office.
How far was the reasoning for this?
Well, I don't know. We met with Tax and Rev in Rio de Janeiro at our retreat. The affiliate is trying to change one of the statutes stating that Tax and Rev, in the statute, it says they may have a tax sale once a year, whereas in our county right now, we haven't had tax in over three years. So we're changing the word "may" to "shall," and I know they don't like that, because that means that they have to be here. I know they're shorthanded, and they've got people just spread out kind of thin, from what I understand. They told us at the affiliate meeting that they didn't want it to be approved, go through the legislation to change that wording, and then all of a sudden, we received this in the mail. So I know that they are not under the budget of the state, they, every penalty, interest, the state cost fee that I sent to them, and every treasurer and the state sends them, that's what they use for their budget. So they want their money, we've got issues where they come and do a tax sale, or they put a taxpayer on a state contract. We do not see that money until that contract is paid up in 36 months. So we cannot distribute any of that money until we get that money. So our schools, municipalities, they don't get any of that money until I get that money in full in 36 months, which we don't think is fair. When they sell a piece of property here, we don't get, we do not get that money until they take everything to Santa Fe, they pay it, they deposit it over there, once they issue the deeds and everything, then we see that money. We don't think that's fair as well either. You know, when they, when they sell that property and they get that money that day, they should pay us for our taxes and take their penalty and interest and state cost fees or whatever is due to them, and leave us with our money. So we've got issues that we are going to hopefully meet with them here soon. I know that Wednesday, Randy, you guys have a meeting in Carlsbad, and I know that our affiliate chair is going to be at that meeting as well, and I'm not sure if Tax and Rev's going to be there, but I know that we're trying to work along with the assessor's affiliate as well to work something out. It's a big mess right now, so, but like I say, anybody has any questions, please feel free to call me or come by my office.
Thank you very much. I know that I've been watching the emails go back and forth on that issue between Tax and Rev and DFA. And before we go to legislature, if you'll make sure you get us all briefed when we're out there, and make sure that we're all on the same page, at the same talking points we can help one another.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. Anthony?
I've got a couple more things. CDBG, the applications will be due usually in January. We of course have the project that we did last year. It looks like though, because of some of the building infrastructure that we've got nowadays, it needs some attention. Could certainly take a look at, I do an application to do some repair at the fairgrounds, on this building, you know, something like that. So I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the commission, get some ideas. We want to start having our public meetings, so we'll have those things done. Last year, we had one in Crete Hila, we had one in the Mimbres, and one here, so we'll continue to do the same. Also, Commissioner Ramos was contacted by Craig Repke yesterday. The initial recommendation from, oh, not, no, from the contractor, shoemaker?
Shoemaker.
He's got, he has that available now. He's going to send me a copy. I'll forward it to each one of the commissioners, so they can take a look at it. What he wants to do is try and set up a meeting with the two municipalities in Grant County that are involved in what would be a regional-type project, instead of looking at those projects all single. Seems like the results were in our favor, so I think that we need to have that meeting hopefully by the second week of October, it's going to be available after the 6th of October, so we'll give it a shot then. One more thing that I want to bring to attention of the commission. We've had a request from several residences to take a look at the roads in Fiero and Hanover. Our road addressing, yes, the road addressing is pretty bad, having- Our road addressing, yes, the road addressing is pretty bad, having, you know, three or four roads with the same name. We're going to go in and we're going to GPS all of the roads, all the residences, we're going to send out letters telling the residents what we're going to attempt to do. We want to go ahead and try and readdress all of that area, which may cause some concern and/or bad feelings, and so, but I think it's extremely necessary. It's been a problem for a while, and...
Is it mainly just up Fierro Canyon?
Excuse me?
Is it mainly just up Fierro Canyon?
I think so, but in Hanover also, you know, there's a, Mossa Road is a real problem, and the little roads that come off of it, and how do proper names for some of the roads that we should probably, you know, we want to straighten it all up at one time. We've got some news women coming up, coming in, that should assist us, so hopefully, I just want to bring that to your attention. I'll send a copy of the letter that we send out to the commission, and I'm assuming we'll probably get some response pretty quickly. So I just want to bring that to your attention. That's all I've got.
Good job, Anthony, thanks for your work. I was just wondering, we had talked at the last Fair Board meeting about a couple of members from the Fair Board serving on the committee with you and John and Anthony to look at the problem.
At this time, they haven't done anything.
They haven't done anything.
What's Rob doing?
Thank you, Chairman Commissioners. Now that one election is done, we're ready to get on with the big one. October 9th is the last day to register to vote or update any information that you may need updated in our office. The first day to early vote or absentee is actually October 9th as well. Early voting begins, like I say, October 9th, it runs the entire month of October, and ends on November 3rd, which is a Saturday in our office. Again, we'll have that satellite over in, at the Bed Community Center. They'll be open from Tuesday, from Tuesday through Saturday, beginning the 20th of October. Their hours are going to be from 9:00 to 6:00, our hours here are 8:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday. If you have any questions, please contact the office, 574-0042. We can get you some absentee applications out to you, or if you can go to our website and download the applications and then mail them in to us, to request those absentees be sent to you that way.
And I guess also, it goes without saying, if you didn't get a ballot for this last election, it's probably because your address is incorrect in the system, you should come in and pick it.
That's correct.
Absolutely. Time for you, Robert.
Yes, sir.
John?
Yeah, wanted to bring up the Fair Barn, out there at the fairgrounds, received an email, and I think the Commissioners received it from a concerned citizen out there, wanted to let you know. But I responded to the citizen, I didn't copy all of you on it, because I try not to do that, just for Open Meetings Act requirement. The concern was that we didn't take the metal and rebuild the current roof that's on the facility. Just wanted to let everyone know that the reason why we didn't do that is because we don't want to put money back into that old facility, because we've talked about, we want to build a brand-new facility, and that's what Commissioner Miller was talking about, having a couple representatives from the Fair Board to meet with us to plan and design a new facility, and it's number one on our ICIP list as the number-one priority of Grant County, is to rebuild that. So basically, we want to tear it down, bring it up out of the hole it's in, and rebuild a brand-new structure that'll be there for a long time going forward. This facility's been there for quite a while, and it's time to replace it and make it a more user-friendly for the people that use it out there, showing the animals and different things, and so that's one thing we're working on. I spoke with Mr. Barra yesterday, was in the office, and he said they've put together a committee to talk about what they would like out there. Now they're just trying to find the people from that committee that will be allowed to come forward and talk to us. So that's where they have it.
It's just a different committee than...
They've got their own, what, my understanding is what happened after our meeting out there is that they couldn't decide on a couple people, because everybody wanted to be part of the process. So what they decided to do is have their own little committee, so everybody could put their two cents in, but then they're going to bring a couple people that will be part of our group. So we won't have everybody that's on the Fair Board here trying to put together a meeting and get their input. That's kind of what he was explaining to me, is possibly happening out there, because that's what I heard, is everybody wants to be a part of the new building, and everybody can't or will never get a new building built.
But I think Mr. Caston explained to them that time is important.
Exactly, and we've started the process with Brian Miller's out there already surveying, we've got Jim Redford already working on it, so we've already had some meetings, and we've got some ideas internally. You know, Commissioner Caston is out there, involved in the fair for many years, few more years than he would like to admit, but, no.
How many years? Is he bagging on it? Forty-two?
See? So he's, you know, worked in this building all that time and knows that it can, what would make it better is, and so then we've got other people's ideas. So we want to make sure we get a building that suits the needs, but we don't try and go for a building that's above and beyond, that we have kind of steps to say, this is the basic structure we need, and these are all the extras, then bid it that way, so it doesn't shut the project down.
But not all these little subcommittees, because that's going to...
No, exactly, no. We had one, and we've asked them for two members, and then they said they would like to give us three, and we said we were fine, two or three, just give them to us quick, and they haven't. So what we've heard also is they're, after the fair is done, then we should have a couple names, but we're going to proceed forward. We're not going to wait for them. We want their input, but if they're going to drag the process out, we're going to proceed forward, because we have a deadline of January when legislation starts. We want our plan done, so we can walk in and say, we're ready to go, please give us the money and have it as an emergency, so we can have it built by next fair.
And the plan is the same thing with this building, is to have the bid documents done before the CDBG hearings, before the legislature, everything, so we have shovel-ready projects.
I think we want to meet everyone we need the best we can, but if it starts dragging, I think we're just going to have to take control and get whatever done. Yeah. So we've got to, so we... Exactly, and that's what we're doing, we're trying to get their input.
Like I said, these little subcommittees just go whole...
It drags things. Wanted to let you know that we've completed the vehicle bid, put it all together. Jacob's reviewing it right now to make sure everything's in it that we need. We've used what the state used as a price agreement, so that we can go out locally for bid. We'll send it to the local Ford dealers, the one in town, the one in Deming and Lardburg, as well as Socorro, Monette Ford has asked for it, and see what we can get to try and buy vehicles locally in this area. It'll be a bid process. So that should hopefully be going out this week. He's got it all, and he, like I say, just reviewing it to make sure we've got everything in it that's required, and currently, what this bid will be for is looking at a price on Ford Escapes and Ford Explorers, to see what the prices would be on those. And the way we've designed it is it'll be a price agreement type of bid, where other people could use it if they wish to, other entities in here, or if the sheriff got some money to buy some vehicles, we could go back and use this without having to bid it again. It'll be good for an entire year, with the ability to extend it for four years with some upgrades. Wanted to let you know, I don't know if the chairman's going to talk about this, we had a meeting out at Borough Mountain Homestead.
Go ahead.
Really nice meeting. They requested from the chairman that we go out there, we had a regular meeting, myself, Mr. Moore, Mr. Benavides, and the chairman went out, and I must say, of all the times I've been called to a community meeting, this one was, people actually thanked us for the job we do, and they didn't attack us. It was very nice, these people were a very nice group of people, it was a very good meeting. It was a very productive meeting, I think we passed a lot of information back and forth, and they were very glad that we did. They were asking questions as to why certain things happen, and we would explain to them, and they understood. It was really, it was really a good meeting, and like I said, they're a really friendly group of people, and they asked a lot of questions about roads, fire, Gary gave them a lot of information about his Ready, Set, Go program, where you're ready to get out of there, and we had also members of Tyrone Volunteer Fire Department were there, so it was, I mean, it was a very, I guess, a very good meeting for the fact that when we left, we were like, man, I felt like we actually accomplished something, instead of, you know, just kind of being stuck in the middle and not understanding each other. It was really, really great meeting with those group of people. They're really a good group of people out there, and I appreciated them and their hospitality. So, and that's all I got.
Back to the fair, it starts tomorrow and runs through Sunday. I'd like to thank Justin in Public Works and Earl in the Road Department, and to go out there and clean up, day on Saturday, it's just amazing to see how those four agents work. I say this every year, but it's just amazing how, you even have to ask them to do something and just do it.
Did I forget FFA?
Any FFA. And so I wish them well, and I know we all do, this weekend, and that's it.
Yes, sir. How about, how's our ETJ meetings coming along, our ETJ committee? I know I spoke to the chairman, he said he was anxious to try and get that...
Yes.
...appointed.
I know it's on the list. It's on the list? Yep. The Thomas Silver City? According to the planning department, puts it together, coordinates, and so Anthony's trying to coordinate their...
Right, when we got, we got the list, when we got our representatives, the Thomas Silver City's contracts that are already expired with their...
So they have to...
So I, it's my understanding that they have some new people and they're ready to go also.
Oh, good.
It's my fault I haven't coordinated.
Let us know next meeting how things go, and see if they appointed that fifth person.
I'll contact them.
Please.
Also, I'd like to thank the crew of Justin Reese for going and helping the Cobra Cross Country with their trails out there. They didn't expect help that fast, and they went and attacked those trails, and they looked really nice. I do want to ask Justin to get his people out there and clean those baseball fields. I believe this weekend, the girls softball open tournaments are starting, and they're going to be playing every Sunday. The boys are already playing every Sunday out there, so those fields are getting really, I mean, they're getting used, and that's, we're happy about that. But the weeds are getting kind of bad in a couple of those, I know the rainy season came and surprised us. I know you had other priorities, but if we can get those cleaned up, that'd be really good. If we could start getting them dragged every Friday for the weekend, it'd be awesome. Did our ATV get stolen out there?
Somebody so graciously decided to borrow ATV from the facility, and the sheriff's trying to find out who it was, because they didn't leave their name when they took it and when they did act...
So...
The sheriff's department has a couple extra ones. So, yeah, can we borrow one of your... I was going to want to, but, you know, they, somebody decided that they needed our ATV we used to drag the fields out there more than we needed it, so. Sheriff's Office is on it.
If we ever get another one out there, maybe we need to start locking it in the Conics instead.
You think it was the same guys that tagged our building? Maybe they used it to drive from Baton Park over to the other building to tag it, I don't know, but, yeah. The sheriff's office, though, is on top of it, he's got his guys on it, they're right away over here to have me sign some paperwork on it, so they can get going on trying to figure out what happened to it, so they're working on it. But as far as I know, we haven't found anything yet, and those are really hard to recover, as you know, once they get stolen.
Well, again, thanks to Justin's crew.
But we're looking at trying to do something out there.
We appreciate that. If we can borrow...
Have we shared with training with the ATVs around the infield driving?
Yeah, that'd be really good, but I think that's all I've got. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to go over a couple things on some of the subdivisions and stuff, specifically the Viva Santa Rega. Some of the commentary you heard earlier acts like we weren't doing anything. The truth of the matter is, is after the first resident came and met with me, I delivered the plat to the planning department the very next day, met with the planning department, started the process. The second resident came to meet with me, I made an appointment with the road superintendent, we actually drove the road, went and looked at all of it, decided that it was a possibility to get it back into shape where we could maintain it. The third person who came to meet with me advised me that we may be maintaining roads past a no trespassing sign. I immediately got with the road superintendent, and he hadn't got back with me yet to find out if that's true. Since then, I've met with the planning department again, the manager again, and the attorney again. So I felt as though I was kind of being put down by one of the residents, because he didn't think I was doing my job, but I think I've done my job very well, and we are moving in the right direction, and we do want to get these people's roads to where they can be maintained, but we are not going to do it in any way, form, or fashion that breaks the law, or any of the other rules that the county has set forth in the previous administrations. So if we would just calm down a little bit, and we start moving through the process with the planning department, and now our county attorney, we will get all of these roads finished one way or another when it's all said and done. That's all I have to say about that. Anything else? At this time, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Send me.
Second. All those in favor, sitting in front of the stand, aye?
Aye.